All right.
Do you want to verify?
Yes, yes. Director Bill is absent. Director Cook?
Here.
Director Kamashian? Director Doherty?
Here.
President Van Vliet?
Here.
Four present, one absent, four met.
All right, can we get a, do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting held on May 2nd, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or in favor, one absent, four met, I'm sorry, motion carried.
Thank you. Alex, thank you for joining us electronically. We appreciate your presence here. I know you are holding down the fort, bringing the bread home, so that's good.
Thank you.
Do we have any public official comments tonight?
Good evening, President Van Vliet. Congratulations to Director Kamashian and Director Cook and Director Bill, and I guess happy birthday to Director Cook as well. I guess today is his birthday. I wanted to, Thursday night, we are going to consider a $248 million expansion project to our regional wastewater facility. It's the biggest contract we've ever led in our history, and this particular project is paid for directly by developer fees, not part of your sewer bill, your rate bill. When you have to expand the plant, that's due to grow. And so developers have paid into that fund for a number of years, and now we're going to take that money, actually have to borrow some money as well at a zero interest loan, which is not a bad rate if you can get it, and build the plant. So that plant will probably take about four years to build. It'll double our capacity for wastewater and obviously provide developers an opportunity also to build more homes and accommodate new businesses as well. So that's on. I wanted to talk a little bit about the recent hazardous algae bloom. I'm so sorry about the echo. I don't know. I don't know why it's doing that. And just to remind people that hazardous algae blooms are becoming more and more common every single day. More and more water bodies have them. We, as an agency, were quite surprised, given how much water we had, the cool temperatures we'd had, and the cold temperatures of the water. So I just think we need to maybe be more diligent and think about our approach and how we not only sample and monitor, but what potential treatments we might have. The United States EPA changed the goalposts for PFAS and PFOA. So the state of California had given us a number of five parts per trillion. Kind of give you an idea what a part per trillion is, three teaspoons of water in the Great Salt Lake. So the new number is no longer five parts per trillion, it's four parts per trillion. And why you might think, oh, that's just, that's not that much. It actually changes how we treat water in our groundwater system now and may impact the level of treatment that we have to provide it, the water treatment plant for Canyon Lake. So right now, we're able to blend new sources of water with our groundwater and meet the level without any extra additional treatment or costs, and that will no longer be possible. So we have a water quality study going on with a group by the name of Hazen Sawyer, who are world-renowned water quality experts to let us know how we're going to have to do it. But just to give you an idea, for one well bed or field, it's going to be about $22 million. So that was $22 million we hadn't planned on spending, and that also means maintenance and everything. So comment letters were provided to the EPA, especially asking them how this is supposed to be affordable for those communities that are disadvantaged and severely disadvantaged. And in Elsinore Valley Service Area, we have quite a few. So how are we supposed to deliver affordable water? And really, what's the benefit of the delta from five to four? I don't know if I'll ever get an answer, but we asked the question. The Canyon Lake Water Treatment Plant is 90% designed. Once we get to 100%, we will have a group of what we call blue ribbon experts, blue panel experts that go through the design, and then we'll come up with what basically the RFP and RFQ are going to look like when you put on the street. When I was elected four and a half years ago, that water treatment plant was planned to be about $20, $22 million, and then it was $40 million. And now we're looking at 50 or 60 million, just because of the cost of materials, the delays, and the additional treatment that we're going to have to do. We're also working on finishing our Integrated Resources Management Plan. We have reached out to the cities, county developers, what you have planned in the future. That's how we kind of plan expansions like the treatment plant. If we need to add more treatment plants, how we're going to meet the needs of the community for the next 20 years. Effective July 1st, I mentioned this last time, we're going to have a rate increase. Two years ago, we, through the Prop 218 process, we approved a 4.5% rate. That also allows us to do a pass-through for things that we can't control, like the cost of wholesale water for metropolitan energy through Southern California Edison, natural gas. We do use some natural gas companies, so you're looking at a total of about a 9.5% increase. To put it in perspective, I asked staff to put together what that, what's that dollar impact to a family, because that percentage doesn't mean anything. So for a family of four in Canyon Lake, it's about a $14 a month increase. That's on water and wastewater, all the fees. That includes your utility taxes and any other fees that are attached to the water bill. We are exploring changing our rate structure completely. Many agencies like Eastern put fixed costs, especially fixed sewer costs, on the property tax. And the benefit is that, yes, you're still paying for it, but the beneficiary really pays. So in most of our severely disadvantaged areas, most of those individuals are renters. And for example, when we're going to septic to sewer in the Sedco and Avenue areas, that input of money is about $60,000 to $80,000 per household, and the beneficiary is truly the landowner, because his property or her property immediately is worth more with sewer than it is receptive. We haven't decided anything yet, but really trying to keep water as affordable we can for those that are least able to pay. And then finally, next Wednesday, June 14th, at 7:30, the mayor and I have our scheduled coffee. So we're welcome to have everybody join us and ask any questions. And that includes if you have questions about your bill or you need help paying, I'm always available to talk. Have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Darcy, I want to thank you for continuing to speak to us on a monthly basis. You know, in this last month, I got my water bill, and it was about, can you shut off your mic? Thank you. I got my water bill, and it was about 50% higher, and Darcy Burke in the back of my head was speaking, saying, "Go check your, go look online, see what's going on." And sure enough, I found out that we have a water leak. So thank you for the continued reminders. It does go to help and and that's good. I also saw that report that, hopefully it's good news, that both the Oroville Dam and the Shasta Dams are nearly full, and hopefully that's good news for California as well. So good. Darcy, thank you so much.
Thank you for opening your bill.
Actually, I went online. We don't have any presentation, any other public official comments. Great. We don't have any presentations tonight. I would like to make a couple of announcements. One is we delayed our orientation this year just due to some travel of a couple of notable directors, one to my right and one in my seat. And so we had our orientation after Memorial Day this year, which normally it would have been a couple of weeks earlier. Just give my thoughts on that. I'm very, I'm very excited and optimistic about our term this year. We have one of the more experienced boards, I think, that we've had in the past, and I have great hope. And one of the things we did is we we set a number of goals and objectives for this term that we'll be sharing with you at the next meeting when we have our full board present. But one of those is to try and, is to work to improve our transparency as a board to the community. And so to that extent, I'd like to make a couple of announcements, and that is, in our executive committee meetings today, there were two major items that we discussed. One is, I want to let everyone know that we've received the draft purchase agreement back from the city today, and we are in the process of reviewing that. And so we're optimistic that will continue on, and we're in good discussions with the city, and we hope that's going to continue to move forward at a good pace. We also talked, we received the bids for the roads project, and that's going to be a subject of discussion that our general manager, Eric Kazakov, is going to talk about. But and both of those are contract items. They take a lot of time. That's what we spent most of our, most of our session. So with that, we'll move to member comments. Are there any harmony?
Yes, today we have one. Oh, we might have one additional. Could you fill out a form if you could, please, and then just bring it up, and I'll call you after. Okay, we, looks like we have three. Thanks. So our first is Paul Hawker.
We're going to try something a little new this time. For those directors who went through the forum, where you get, they give you a minute to speak to every given question, one of the things that the the other directors found to be very helpful was a visual reminder. So here is a visible clock that we're going to allow you to keep an eye on to to do your three-minute talk.
Hi. Joe, you look good up there. Welcome back. And Bill, congratulations on your appointment as president. Well-earned. My name is Paul Hawker, 3804052. I'm the president of the pickleball club. From what I understand, some staff members have been approached by some pickleball club members or just individuals that play down there. And there's still an issue with some overcrowding on the courts, and we're trying to get a handle on that. So if possible, in the ensuing months, if I could work with maybe security and committee, and also the Rules Committee and staff to get everything nice and clean. We have two brand-new pickleball courts being added at East Gate, and they're coming at a good time. It's appreciated for everybody that's playing down there, but I'd like to get this all squared away before those come online, so we can do that smoothly and efficiently. And also, our club was talking earlier among our own board members, we were going to stop accepting new members for the the club. The club's been growing. We have almost 550 members now. We have a huge influx of people come over from the tennis courts that want to learn the up-and-coming pickleball sport, and they're most welcomed over there, and they pick up the game really fast, and it's working nice. But the comment was made is the overcrowding is not so much caused by the increased number of members of the community that are coming down to play, but a tremendous number of people that are coming from outside the community. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate your comments.
We have three more this evening. Chuck Moreno?
Chuck Moreno, 3846330. I'd like to talk about Fiesta Days just slightly. From the word on the street that I get, people do not like five parks to have to go back and forth to. That's number one. Maybe we can cut it down to two, possibly. If you had a committee that did Fiesta Day, I would definitely join that. Okay? I will volunteer my time. Secondly, you know, Fiesta Day was normally a time that the Bassmasters raised money for the Kids Derby. And I can tell you some crazy ridiculous numbers that are absolutely true, how much money we made for the Kids Derby this year. I'm going to tell you what we made, a big zero. Okay? So I'll be, I'll be soliciting all you guys, saying, hey, can you donate to the Bassmasters this year, please? You know, I don't know if it's location. Our taco vendor was pushed into the Eastport, and I was not in favor of that, and there's been a lot of uncertainties and stuff that's gone on. Anyways, that's just my opinion about the Fiesta Days. From what I hear, I would do a poll. You can do it on Facebook, it's real easy, and ask people, because I know you guys all look at Facebook and see that social media stuff. You kind of hear what's going on. I know there's a lot of talkers on there, but there's some meaning to it. And yeah, I think that's about it for Fiesta Days. You know, last year, we made 850 towards the Kids Derby. Prior years to that, 1,300, 1,800, just in taco sales. So it was a pretty good moneymaker for us, for the Bassmasters, for the Kids Derby, and that helps to put that whole thing on. I appreciate you guys' time, and I was down at the pickleball courts on Thursday at around, oh, 10:30 on Thursday last week, and only two of the pickleball courts were being used. So I, you know, I, you can do some, I can donate some software to, you know, people count and court count. I'm still not a firm believer those courts are used as much as they're talked about. I'd like to see a track and lot on 500 members. You know, show me that. So I see I got 30 seconds. So right on. Anyways, congratulations, Joe, and all the other new board members. Have a great night. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Chuck. We appreciate your comments, and also appreciate everything the Bassmasters do. You can count me in when you hit me up.
Kristen Kraus?
Kristen Kraus, 3868297. I, welcome to all the new members. I think I emailed all of you. I'm here to discuss single rider golf carts. So right, I guess it was winter of 2019, the golf course rented a small fleet of four golf scooters. They're called fins. They are two-wheeled golf carts. They do have 1,200 watt motors. They are restricted. They do not go greater than 15 miles per hour. Even downhill, you coast, it recharges. It will not go fast enough. So I have spent a lot of time reading the CCNRs and talking to various people, and I've seen the bicycles, the electric bicycles are everywhere. They have pedals. They are restricted to 750 watt motors. Those 750 watt motors go 28 miles per hour. So I am here to respectfully request that we expand the definition of golf cart to include less than four wheels. It is made specifically for golf. We've been playing for three years at the course. We rode during the pandemic without question, and then were suddenly stopped in January of 2021 and got cited. And ever since then, I hope you guys got my PDF. I had three slides, and there's a copy there. I had to build a trailer for my golf cart, put the golf, the single rider golf carts and trailer them to the course. So I'd really, really like to be able to ride my skis. Now I'm approaching 58. It's really hard for me to get that thing on the trailer, and I would love to take advantage of our beautiful facilities. Thank you for your consideration. Oh, and the other things that were pointed out, and the other things that I read, is the reason that two-wheeled, two- and three-wheel motorized vehicles were not allowed was due to noise, 100% electric motor, zero noise, increased liability and injury, again, restricted to 15 miles an hour, of very low center of gravity, and it's insured on the exact same policy as my golf cart. So with the coverage to the POA and everything. So none of those things should be an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Joe Wassley?
Joe Wassley, 3716433. First, I'd like to congratulate Joe for being on the board and came too much with Mr. Bill. He's not here. But congratulate Bill Van Vliet on being the president. The one I wanted to talk about is the bicycles, the electric bicycles. And I really have a concern for the safety of the kids. I find it hard to believe, after watching so many kids on bicycles, that there's nobody, no kids in Canyon Lake between 10 and 16 that do not have an electric bike. They're all over the place. But my concern is, is they drive them so fast. Now, I think this lady said they go 28 miles an hour. In my golf cart, I try to keep it at 20, which is the speed limit, and they go by me like I'm standing still. And I'm really concerned that if we don't put some type of rules in to slow these bikes down, or what they can do, or what they cannot do, that we're going to have a couple of kids that really get hurt seriously. And especially when some, a few of them don't have helmets on. So I just wanted to mention that and hope that you kind of look into it in the future as a problem and see if we can solve it. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Our last is Russ and Sue Muscarrella.
Hi. My name is Sue Muscarrella, lot number 3846238, and I want to say there's a lot of excitement in the community for this new board. We stand behind you, and we feel very confident in what you're going to do for our community in the next two years. So thank you for your service. I tag teamed with Paul Hawker on the pickleball community. He is president of the pickleball club, but as a resident and a member of the pickleball community, there is some hostility on the courts with habitual non-residents that are attending on a regular basis, being called in, and then not being accompanied by their sponsors and abusing the use of our courts while residents are observing them playing, while we sit and watch for sometimes 20 and 30 minutes at a time. We, as a community, feel very strong that the courts need to be protected for the residents. So we have visited with the Rules and Regulations Committee last month and made some suggestions on some amendments to the current rules that would protect us residents who pay POA dues. And so we're asking for the board to support us in moving forward to amend these rules so that the residents have priority. And one of the primary recommendations we have is peak hours for residents only. And that is something that's used at a lot of different pickleball clubs that make the residents feel respected on their own courts, where right now we're not feeling that way. So we just want you to know what's going on on the courts. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. We'd like to thank all the members who came forward and speak. You know, it's always good for us, board members, to hear from our community. And so for those of you who have the courage to come forward to speak in front of everyone, it is helpful for all of us in in hearing your perspective, and we will certainly take all of your concerns under consideration. With that, let's move to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Is there any motion to withdraw any part of the consent agenda? You want to draw something, or?
So moved.
I'm sorry, did you ask for a motion? So I heard a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed, and a second.
Was a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I believe that's what it is.
Okay, then I'll say.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda as proposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Four in favor, one absent. Motion carried.
So next, we'll move to the first board action item, which is proof of insurance required for golf carts. Someone who is going to present that? I know Amanda's.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here on Zoom.
Amanda, thank you.
So this is an approval to revise Rule GR .5, .6, .D, .1, proof of insurance required for golf carts. This was approved for its 28-day reading last month, and this rule change will essentially require members to provide proof of insurance for their golf carts that demonstrates $300,000 worth of liability coverage and also lists the CLPOA as additional insured. This was brought up after the board in March proposed that staff research these additional requirements and whether or not they would benefit the association. And so the redlined rule is being read that the Board of Directors approve the revision.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to defeat this rule change, and I'd like to have a discussion about that, if I can get a second.
Of course you can. Second.
Thank you.
All in favor of discussion to?
Excuse me, do you like some, ask for member comments?
Thank you, yes. Any member comments? Thank you for that. Member comments on the rule? And you can just raise your hand if you have an opinion, if you'd like to speak. You'd like to speak, you can come, raise your hand and come forward.
I think it's a great idea, because some people drive their carts crazy, and the community needs to be protected. And I've been carrying it for 20 years, so I don't see there's any reason to change that rule at all. And I was here when those, that couple got killed and left their children parentless on the causeway. I think it's a good idea.
So my understanding is you want to, you want to not have insurance or not require insurance?
No, that's not, just to defeat the rule as is being proposed. The old rule, which I proposed to leave in place, still requires insurance to be in place. It's just the proof of insurance and the status of additional insured, and also the minimum limits of 300,000, which again, we don't have now. We just have, show us your insurance. It might be 50,000 of liability, 100,000. Now we're going to move that affirmatively to 300,000, and I can tell you with certainty that a lot of people in this community don't have that.
Yeah, just to clarify, because there's a little confusion about what we're proposing here. So what was proposed was modifying the rule to to make it basically the same as the position. What Director Doherty is proposing is that we have a subsidiary motion to adjust with what is being proposed.
Okay, I think it's a great idea to have the insurance, and if it makes us less liable for any accidents, we need to go ahead with that. If it costs us a little more to pay for the golf cart insurance, I think that's a good thing. So we do need to enforce it, though. That's another whole topic over here regarding golf carts that are illegal and all that kind of stuff, because I see them every single day. So, but thank you for doing that, and I endorse the insurance. So, but thank you for doing that. And I endorse the insurance.
Hi, Paul Hawker, 3804052. I like the idea, just during the last, since the last meeting when they set this up for a 28-day reading, I checked with my own insurance company. And the cost would be about, right now, my golf cart is insured as a rider on my homeowner's insurance. It's about $50 a year. And it would be about 10 times that if I get the full liability and property damage. So I understand the urge for it, but I think that should be looked into. For some people, that's a tremendous amount of increase with everything else going up. So maybe it at least needs to be looked at. I'm not against the amendment, but it scares me of how, what a heavy burden it would be.
Thank you, Paul. Any other member comments?
Claude Beauchamp, 3718004. I concur with Paul that like 300,000 is the norm for a vehicle in freeways. So I just think it's a bit excessive for golf carts. I do agree that there is some amount, but I think 300,000 is a little beyond the norm.
Thank you, Claude. Joe, when, Joe, I called Tim. Thank you, Tim. Go ahead, Joe.
When I moved here 20 years ago, like plus years ago, we had basically the same rule that we're talking about putting in now. We formed a committee maybe 10 years ago and to study the insurance things. And the committee came back and said, well, we've got there, which is this same policy, is basically worthless. It doesn't mean anything. And it's going to cost people a lot more money to put the thing in. So based on what they came up with, and this was a committee of insurance people. Know that Greg is an insurance person. But this is a committee of several insurance peoples that did it. So I don't see a need to change what we have right now. We're all right, require that you have insurance like through your homeowner's policy. So that's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Tim, if you could come forward?
Tim Cook, 3804040. I did send a letter to the board, the last board, about this when I researched it myself. I came up with the exact same sentiment as Paul. Found out it went from a rider that basically cost me nothing on my policy. Now, the cart is insured, but if I go to these standards, it literally was, I think, eight times higher than what I was paying. So it is, I do have coverage and I can show proof of coverage. But to do it this way, it was quite a huge increase and it has to be a separate policy. So just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any other member comments? Okay, with that, we'll, any board discussion?
So the two main changes that are proposed are the, one, the requirement for additional insured under the members' cart policy for the POA. And part two has been mentioned, the $300,000 minimum liability limits. And has, as several people have already addressed and checked with their agents, and I've received emails from other folks on the subject, there's going to be a cost increase for them to raise the limits. The additional insured item is, I say it's nice if you can get it. You know, if someone will name you as additional insured just by asking and you can get it, that's fine. But here's the underlying thought on my motion to defeat this is that, and it hasn't been mentioned yet, is that, you know, our job up here is at the end of the day to protect the POA, right? And the POA has insurance for this exposure already. In other words, if there's a golf cart accident and some people are severely injured and somehow this, the owner slipped through the cracks, he's got no insurance, he's judgment-proof, and a bunch of people are hurt, we, without much question, in today's world, are going to get dragged into the lawsuit, the, we being the POA. And because we're the deep pockets. Well, we have insurance for that already, not to worry. I'll sleep well tonight, knowing that that's the case. So at this, and also what's happened, you know, two months ago when we passed this, I was pretty much in favor of it. But in the last 60 days, a lot has changed in the world of golf carts and insurance. The biggest underwriter of golf carts in the state, which is called Foremost, which probably some of you in this room have as your golf cart carrier, stopped writing new policies about six weeks ago. Allstate Insurance, which was another large provider of golf cart insurance along with homeowners, stopped writing in California sometime late last year. Two Saturdays ago, State Farm, which owns 21% of the homeowner's market in this state, stopped writing new policies. So the homeowners, the golf cart insurance market has shrunk and it's causing a lot of chaos. There's already a thread on Facebook that I'm participating in. People are scrambling for coverage. So that's why I say that it's probably not a good time to be adding these two new requirements to our existing rule. My suggestion is to leave them as they are, just that you have some level of insurance, liability insurance, whether it's 50,000 or 100,000. We can live with that because we know we have our own coverage for the POA at the end of the day. So it's like, oh, the other issue is that we have, Eric, I think you mentioned this, the 2,800 golf carts, I heard you say?
Almost 2,700 registered.
2,700 golf carts. And can you imagine the administration of all of the evidence of insurance? It's that staff's going to have to spend their time getting something in. Oh, this isn't right. We got to send it back to the member and the member getting frustrated and going to their agent. It's going to save the staff a lot of time, too, if we just keep the requirement that we have.
Any other comments, discussion?
Well, I certainly understand that. And insurance is a personal matter and limits that you cover, you know, should be up to you. And we shouldn't, you know, dictate numbers that aren't safe. And if Greg's, you know, as Greg says, and I confirmed it, that from our position as protecting the liability of the POA and you as members of the POA, we're covered. POA is covered if there's an accident. So I don't see a point in putting these restrictions in and causing families that maybe can't afford it or don't need it to have to buy insurance that they otherwise would. So I support this.
And since we're not present, Alex, I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak if you'd like.
I think everything's been said. I think there's nothing I could add. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to clarify what we're voting on. For starters, what was proposed was to modify it. And I think Director Doherty, you were, you said you wanted to vote no. Do you have a subsidiary motion or a different motion you want to make instead?
A subsidiary motion might be to retain the current requirements for insurance. Defeat the proposed amendments and keep the current rule in place.
Okay, so that would be just taking the current measure and just we either vote aye or nay. Yes for it or no against it, because otherwise it reverts to, I just want to be clear on what we're voting, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
No, no, we're voting yes for the motion or we're voting no against the motion. And if we vote no against it, then it stays as it is. Is that, is that correct, Harmony?
Yes, so the current motion is to reject the rule change. Therefore, everything would remain as is, which is his intention, it sounds like. So you might just want to call for a vote in favor of rejecting this.
In favor, okay. All in favor of rejecting this proposal and leaving the golf cart insurance as it is? Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Four in favor, one absent. Motion carried.
Greg, I have a question. Part of this rule change was to add the $100 fine, which I understand was the basis behind the original rule change. And then it grew out to be, you know, the additional insured and the 300,000. And if Amanda's still on the line, Amanda, I'd like to know, is that still something that you feel is important that we have on that rule that doesn't exist today?
Hi, Joe, yes. I do think it is important to add the $100 fine because staff does already track insurance with the current requirements. But with the permanent decal, we don't really have any incentive to, or for, I should say, members to come into the office and provide updated insurance. And so if we're able to add that fine onto the account, it does a really great job prompting members to come in and give us that updated policy. And then we just waive the fine. It's exactly what we have now in place for boats and we see it work really well. So it would be a good idea, in my opinion, to have the $100 fine added to the current rule.
Would you like to make an amended motion to add the $100 fine?
Would it be an amended motion or a new motion?
So I just clarified, Sean and I discussed. If you'd just like to make an entirely new motion to start this 28-day reading over again to amend and add a $100 fine, you guys would approve it next month after hearing the member comments.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that the current rule, GR 5, GR 5.6. D. 1, Proof of Insurance Required for Golf Cart, be established as it is currently written, but to include a fine of $100 for any violation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Four in favor, one absent. Motion carried.
All right, next item is Eric Kazakov on our potential contract award for the Phase 2 or Year 2 of our pavement project.
Okay, my apologies in advance. This is, this is long. So a little background, in 2021, 22, the Canyon Lake Property Owners Association performed full-depth reclamation reconstruction on 1.3 million square feet of our privately owned roads. GMU Pavement Engineering was the pavement engineering firm for that project, known as the Year 1 Project. The POA contracted with Premier Paving to do the work. That project was extremely successful and both GMU and Premier Paving performed above and beyond our explanations, expectations, sorry. Fiscal impact, this year, GMU and the POA released another RFP for our Year 2 project for the next phase of our multi-year road rehabilitation project. This year's scope of work will include seal coating the 1.3 million square feet of roads that we completed last year and full-depth reclamation on another 1.4 million square feet of new road reconstruction this year. The seal coat that we're going to be doing on the last year's portion, last year's phase project, the seal coat is essentially a sunblock for the roads that were done last year. And that work is part of any prudent pavement management program to keep them in good shape for many years. The, this year, Longhorn Drive and the adjacent streets is the primary focus area. There is a project map in the distributed agenda. It's also online under our pavement project page. This year, seven contractors were invited to bid on the project and three of them submitted their bids. We received bids ranging from 8 million to 10 million for Strategy A, which would be full-depth asphalt removal and replacement within the project limits. Prices for Strategy B, which coincidentally is the same strategy we used last year, that includes full-depth reclamation, which is basically grinding the top three and a half inches of asphalt, removing that, sending that for recycling elsewhere and then pulverizing the remaining asphalt and existing subbase in place and when cement treating it as it goes back down. So it improves the quality of the subgrade. The prices for that Strategy B range were less and they range from 7,860,000 to 9,690,000. Strategy B is the same methodology as last year's project. I just described what that is. This product, this method was very successful last year, uses less new asphalt and it improves the base surface material. Pricing for both strategies includes seal coating, the 1.3 million square feet of new asphalt that was installed last year. Strategy B, which is basically the same as we did last year, is less money because it requires less new asphalt. Asphalt is up about 20 to 30% over last year's project. And the cement treating for the cement-treated base portion is up about 20% also. As of last Friday, discussions were ongoing with GMU and the POA and the contractors. This, this action item is written and in your packages basically is serving as an update to the community. And what we wrote last week was if contractor negotiations clarifications are complete as of today, the board meeting, we will add information that is not on this page. The current balance in our road reserve and litigation funds is today is 8,764,000. When we move the funds budgeted for '22 to '23, '22 and '23, we have allocated $2,019,008 from the operating fund to be put into this road reserve. So therefore, we'll have a total of $10,783,008 to use for this project. This project is part of a multi-year road replacement project with the goal of improving our overall pavement condition index to acceptable levels. We anticipate doing around $2 million worth of work each year after this year for the next several years. And then I have an update. Get some water. And the update is that we have been negotiating with some of the contractors and the pavement engineer. And we've arrived at today's recommendation. And that recommend, and we don't name contractors until we have fully executed contracts. So right now, what we'll do is I'm going to request funding from the board. And then when we have a fully executed contract, we will update the community. So at this time, staff recommends that the board approve contract negotiations and contract formation with a payment contractor not to exceed $7,770,459 plus a 10% contingency to come from the Road Reserve Fund. And I looked at last year's board action item and last year we did, just for reference, we did $5,127,081 and we also added a 10% contingency to that amount. We did not use that, all of that contingency. And a good portion of that, about half of that, less than half of that contingency went to project oversight that we, we originally got a bid from GMU last year for project oversight, which is onsite, their onsite staff on a day-to-day basis, taking samples and lab testing. It's the one type of work that we do here in Canyon Lake where we farm out some of the project management duties because it's a large project. And they're specialists in pavement and we're not. Last year, their proposal for the $5 million project was $495,000 for oversight. And we told them we don't want to pay that much money and we do a lot of project management here in-house. And so we negotiated with them for not to exceed $350,000. So we saved $150,000 last year by Steve Schneider and I doing a good portion of the day-to-day project oversight. I live here, Steve's here every day. And we don't have their proposal for this year's project yet because we haven't formed, we haven't formed a contract, we haven't picked a contractor. We don't have a schedule yet. I expect that we will be doing that if the board approves the funding tonight. I'll go through that process next, this coming month. And next month, I will bring a proposal from GMU for the oversight. I expect that it would probably be in the Four, five hundred thousand dollar range. Last year was five hundred negotiated to three fifty. Last year we used some of the ten percent contingency to pay for that. So we could do that again this year. Use the ten percent contingency to pay for the project oversight or we could reduce the contingency to eight percent. And, and just let the project oversight proposal stand on its own next month. I would be comfortable with eight percent. For just the payment project without the oversight portion. So last year, last year we did the value of the project plus ten percent and then we paid for the oversight out of that ten percent. So that's my vague recommendation. And I'll let you decide which way to approve it.
Okay, is there a, is there a motion to approve contact negotiation form, information? For the phase two of the road reserves?
I'll move that we approve funding for the phase two road renovation project. In the amount of seven million seven hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and fifty nine dollars. Plus a ten percent contingency. For that project to start, for the general manager to move forward with the contract.
Thank you, Joe. Is there a second?
Second.
Any member comments? None? Any discussion? Or discussion?
Yeah, Eric touched on it and I don't know if everybody caught it, but this is a few million dollars more than we did last year. Obviously cost increases, material labor, all those things that we have to factor in. But we're doing about one point three million in renovation. And then we're going back to the phase one work that we did already, slurry coat on top of that. So we're covering twice the area. That we did before, so it's a justified reason why the costs are significantly higher. So this is something we need to do to preserve our roads. So I want everybody to understand that.
I, I appreciate you emphasizing that again. You're right. I mean, we're, we did one point three million feet last year. We're doing one point four million new square feet this year, but we're also going back and sealing last year. So it really is. Almost exactly twice as much footage.
Any other comments?
I have a.
Well, go ahead, Alex.
I have a comment. Eric, can you do us a favor and just kind of let everybody know which roads we're doing, what direction, just so everybody's up to speed on where phase two actually is? It's probably up on the screen. I just can't see it.
Lynn is putting it on the screen right now and basically. Is it sideways? It's upside down. We're turning it. Okay, so if you're driving towards the fire station. Can you scroll down? I don't know what's going on there, but up the other direction, the other down. I don't know what's happening. Keep going that. Unhighlight it. Go the other way. Okay. Okay. Weird things were happening. We're not sure why. Okay, so. Your up is my down. Okay. So if you're driving on vacation, drive towards the fire station. The last, I can't really read. Let me see if I can read it on my paper. The last few side streets before you get to the fire station. I actually can't read this. Yeah, before San Joaquin, some of those side streets, it looks like we're going to be doing San Joaquin. We're not doing any portion of Vacation Drive this year, but some of those last streets prior to, it looks like Buttercup Place. All of those side streets after. Really can't read it. After Inspiration, no. After Green Pine. So driving towards Vacation, Green Pine on the right. And then San Joaquin on the left and then Yosemite. Bass Place and whatever that other last little street is on the right before the fire station. Snowwater Place, thank you. So we're doing those and then you come across the Causeway and we're going to do all of Longhorn. And basically all the streets go the other direction, Lynn. All the streets. All the way to Happy Camp. And don't hold me to that because I, I can't see all that great and we don't actually have a list of the streets. I'm almost positive everything is included on that side. There may be a cul-de-sac here and there and it's not. It's, it's about two things. It's about doing the worst first. And it's about trying to stay working in the same region because some of these, the asphalt grinding machine is a massive piece of equipment. And it doesn't make any sense to move it around. There is also, if you scroll the other, make them make, go down towards Railroad Canyon. There is one little area right by the senior center. What's it called? Burning Tree and Champion, I think. Pyramid Point. Okay, so. I should have known you were asking me this and I, I, I don't have the, the physical list yet, but that's the general idea. There's a map. Our, in our Facebook feed, there's a map in the RFP. If this gets approved tonight, we'll republish this map. And that's the general idea. We did most of East Bay. Last year on the north side. We didn't do any major arteries this year. We're going to be doing Longhorn, which is obviously a major artery and, and that will be phased. There'll be a lot of traffic control, but we had an extremely successful project last year and a really awesome team. With our guys and GMU, the engineers guys and the pavement contractors, so we're ready to do more.
Anything else, Alex?
No, that's it. I just want to make sure everyone's aware. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. One is. A good job for, I know Eric, you went through and did some value engineering on this, also some. You did some best in finals with the contractors to get it to be as competitive as can be. And so I think that's very good. Seven point eight million for, for the scope of work they're talking out. This is, this is substantial. And as a homeowner who is a beneficiary of, of this project last year, I know the community is going to love it. It, they, this company did a terrific job. The one thing I would like to see different, rather than just put in a ten percent, ten percent contingency, because that's about eight hundred K, it's almost eight hundred K. I, I personally would rather approve the contract negotiation formation and as Eric indicated, he's willing to do. Bring the overs, the project management bid back next month as well, because I know you can do as good a job on that and negotiating them down as you did on the, on the bids. That's my, that's my.
So if I, if I heard you right, you're saying you want to approve this without any contingency?
You said put the, I guess to clarify, maybe I misunderstood. You're saying the contingency is for the project or including the project management?
So last year, last year, the way I, the way I presented the project was a five point one, five point two million dollar project with a ten percent contingency. And how, how I worded it last year, and this is kind of what I'm trying to say. Now, the ten percent contingency should cover any unforeseen conditions, regular oversight by our pavement engineers and all material testing. To ensure that all specifications are met and that we receive a quality product, product. Engineers' observation and testing costs are currently expected to be approximately five percent of the contract amount. Leaving five percent purely for contingencies. The funding request with contingency was, last year was. Five point one plus ten percent. So you approved, the board approved last year five point six million.
Yeah, okay.
So we could do that again, or we could just say, I would be comfortable approving an eight percent contingency or something and then we let. We, we wait and see where the oversight proposal comes in and that just stands on its own next month.
Thanks for clarifying that because it is important on this oversight, this project management that they're performing is good because. The lesson we learned from the last time around is we didn't, this is, this, this, this oversight or project management group. They will actually go through their, their, at every site, they do samples, they take them back to their labs, they do, they do quite a bit of work to ensure that we're getting the product. Of, of what we're under contract for and that didn't happen the last time, which is we got into the whole litigation.
La- last time being two thousand twelve.
Two thousand twelve. So, so it's a very important part of it to have that independent audit and, and oversight function. And if that's included in ten percent, then I'm fine with it as is, as proposed. With that, let's, let's take a vote. All in favor of approving the contract negotiation formation for the amounts specified with a ten percent contingency? Say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Four in favor, one absent, motion carried.
Thank you.
Did that, thank you for that. With that, we're.
We have plenty to do this year now. Thank you.
With that, Eric, you still have the floor. General managers report.
Okay, so thank you all for coming. We appreciate everyone being here and paying attention and being interested in what we're doing. I want to thank activities and operations and everybody involved with a very successful Fiesta Hopper, Fiesta Days with an S. Multiple days. Everyone did amazing job. It was a great time. I can't say enough good things. Fiesta Day and Fourth of July are really what this community are about and it went flawlessly as always. As Bill said, we had a good orientation, thirty two hours locked in a room together. POA one O one, we call that for the new board members. And there's a lot to cover because we're a multifaceted organization and it was a good week. So as always, I refer people to review the staff reports in our published agenda. All of our departments take a good amount of time putting together a written report and there's, if you want to know what's going on here, take a look at that. There's our communications team, activities, planning and compliance, operations, and all the managers of those departments do a great job. Writing down what they did for the month and, and I always urge people to read that. Our median project is ninety nine percent complete. Hopefully you've driven. You might see it on your way home tonight. Depending on how long we go, the, the lighting got turned on the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, which was great. We had some blue and red. Lighting mixed in with the white just accidentally when they flipped the switch, which was kind of cool for Memorial Day. It was pretty random, but it looked nice and for Fourth of July, we'll actually turn on the lights in some kind of a logical sequence. But it, they'll be red, white, blue. For nine eleven, we can make them all blue. So we're very proud of that project. There was. There was a lot of commentary on that project, but it's pretty quiet now because people, I think people realize it looks pretty nice. And when we open up the palm trees, it's going to look beautiful. This has been said many, many times, but. All the palm trees are under warranty. The nursery requires they be tied up for twelve weeks. We have about three and a half weeks to go. And if any of them don't make it, they're under warranty and they'll be taken care of. I think they're going to be fine. So it's going to look really great when we cut those open and. Something we can all appreciate for the next thirty, forty years. Our solar project is wrapping up. We're starting making plans on improvements under the driving range array. We will be putting a black shade cloth in between the two structures. In case you missed it, the reason there's two structures, there's the EVMWD easement, sewer easement in between them. And we weren't allowed to build solar panels over the easement, so, but we are allowed to put a shade cloth over them. So it'll be continuous shade and look much more continuous than it looks now and a nice shaded driving range. The Harrelson Park dock is currently being built and will be replaced when it's built. Immediately after that, the Holiday Harbor dock over by the fish station will be constructed and then that one will be installed. Lodge project is moving along. You can't miss the stage and bandstand area out there. That trellis is wrapping up. There should be some wood installed on that by the end of the week. And out here, when you walk out these two doors, you probably saw some plywood holes. Those are footings for two small trellises that will cover these two sets of doors, just to kind of dress up the entrance to this, this multipurpose room. They're working on the dining patio. Current expectation is that the patio should be complete by July thirty first. I expressed a little concern about that to the contractor this morning and they got the message. So. A strong reminder, you know, we're supposed to be done in sixty days, right? Yes, yes, we know. So that's our plan right now. Pickleball courts have started. Duration for that project is a hundred and twenty days, so that would put us in October. Glad you appreciate that. I think it's, I think it's needed and should help the congestion situation over there. At the Equestrian Arena. We recently just reinstalled DG in all the stalls, just kind of routine maintenance that we do over there now, now and then. In Magnolia Room downstairs at the country club, we just installed the cabinets and that room's pretty much, a total renovation of that room's pretty much finished. And suddenly that room is in very high demand by businesses and clubs and groups and banquets. And we kind of took a very little used space and now it's in very high demand and producing revenue. This time of year, planning and compliance and operations are both very busy working on weed abatement throughout the community on properties that we own and privately owned properties. A lot of weeds this year, a lot of rain. And so that's kind of our gig this, this time of year and that's in full swing. And then. You were going to put up the newsletter? So I just want to remind people that. It, I'm always shocked when people say you, you have an app. Canyon Lake POA has a website. You have a, you have a newsletter. Yes, we have all those things. And every Friday we mail out almost eight thousand emails at about six thirty, seven PM every Friday night. It's the last thing that Tiffany and me and Lynn do is edit the content of the email. So it's, you know, late breaking news on Friday night. Here's what's happening this weekend. Here's what happened this past week. Here's what's happening this coming week. And then I looked at a. A status report. Of how many of those get opened? There's a lot of them don't get opened. And it's kind of sad because we're really trying to force information to people. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make them drink. And I don't know if these are going into people's spam folders or they just have no idea. Maybe it's an old email address, but. We reach out to eight thousand people every Friday and a lot of people aren't reading them or, or getting them. But if you want to know what's happening in the POA, Lynn's scrolling through a sample. This is how you find out what's going on here. Every week we, we spend the last hour of every Friday. Working hard to tell you, this is what already happened this week. This is what's happening this weekend. This is what's happening next week and the rest of this month. It's all right there. So if you're not getting it, check your spam folder. Make sure we have your current email address. We're trying very hard. And my final reminder is Atlanta Rhythm Section Concert in here in the Holiday Bay Room on June seventeenth. And we still have tickets available and that's all I have tonight. So thank you.
Thank you, Eric. With that, we'll move to board comments and I'm going to begin Alex with you since you're the furthest away at the moment.
Oh, thanks. Just want to thank the community for reappointing me and putting me back on the board. I really, really appreciate it. After the election and before orientation, I sat on two committees. I sat on the Rules Committee and the Finance Committee and just going to give you update. Rules, Rules Committee, as it was mentioned already tonight, that. So we had, I think, twelve, twelve pickleball players come in and discuss some rule modification ideas, which is really good. And also Amanda and the Rules Committee has been ongoing looking at ways to simplify all our rules and the fee structure. So that's an ongoing project that they're working on every month. We have roughly a hundred and seventy pages of rules and we have a goal to try to narrow that down. So it's easier to digest for new people to move here or people that have been here for twenty years. As for the Finance Committee, super excited to be on that committee now. Some very intelligent people that are there getting, giving us as board directors and the POA board guidance. and the P O A Board guidance and making recommendations. Uh, last month, we had some investment conversations. Some people came in and made some presentations. Um, very eye opening and we're looking for some better investment opportunities with some of our money. So we can make more on our dollars we have. So outside of that, um, as we roll into the new board, um, it's, it's green light for all of us. Um, and look forward to working with all the committees. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Alex. Um.
Thank you. Um, like Alex, I want to thank everyone who supported me in my candidacy and I'm proud to sit back on the board again. It's a great feeling and it's, it's, uh, I, I hope we can be as successful in this term, which I'm sure we will as, as we were before. I, uh, I want to stress the fact that, uh, this particular election had six candidates. Of those six candidates, the votes only separated them by a hundred and fifty votes, as extremely close. As most of you may know, I won my seat by six votes. So if you think your vote doesn't count, think twice because your vote does count. It's really important. And if you feel like you want to support someone, then make the effort and fill out the ballot. It's not that difficult. With that, I got a new job. So now I am Committee Liaison to five committees. Yeah.
Joe, Joe's our overachiever.
Well, it's okay. I'm getting paid well. I'm, I'm the liaison to the Senior, Senior Committee at the Senior Center. Uh, met with them this morning as a matter of fact. Uh, the good way to start off my board day is nine o'clock in the morning, uh, in the, the Senior Center. Great group of people. Uh, very dedicated to their facility and their cause. Uh, I can tell you that they made the decision on their photo contest and they had two winners. They showed the photos, uh, at the meeting today, uh, beautiful photos of the community that they will have blown up and mounted on the, uh, Senior Center walls. So that's a real, uh, addition to the, their facility. Also, the Garden Club made a presentation, uh, and is, wants to work with them on, uh, improving the plants around the facility. Uh, so they're working together to, to accomplish that. Uh, they're also planning their New Year's party, which is always a big bash in Canyon Lake. And you don't have to be an old folk to go. You can, uh, you can just, uh, sign up, but they're limited on their space. So the other committees I'm involved with, uh, the Green Committee, which is near and dear to me. Been honored for many years and I look forward to serving on that. They do a lot of great things on the golf course. Um, and with that, I'll serve on the T W G Tuesday Work Group Committee. And the appeals, uh, they meet once a month. I believe it's once a month. That's what they told me. And, um, we'll listen to, uh, members' appeals from citations. And lastly is the I D R meetings that, uh, Greg and I will be on. Uh, hopefully we don't see any of you in our I D R, though. And I want to commend the board. I've had orientation locked in the room for a whole week and, uh, we got along great. We had a lot of good, uh, conversations, topics and, uh, plans for the future of the community. And I'm really looking forward to working with these guys. So, thank you.
You, Joe, Greg.
Uh, I too would like to congratulate Joe and Jeff and Alex for their reelection. Um, we spent the last week, as Eric mentioned, uh, ensconced a, a ru- room and I felt a lot of synergy and a lot of energy and a lot of focus coming out of that. So I'm, I'm really excited about this next year. Uh, one of the things we had to do is, um, carve out the liaison, uh, responsibilities and we thought it was going to take an hour. And lo and behold, it took about, uh, ten minutes and there was a lot of agreement. Well, you know, uh, Joe, you should have five and, uh, it started, worked, it worked out real well. And, uh, as Joe said, I'm on the, uh, I D R Committee, which meets tomorrow. And so I'm so excited to, uh, see who comes before us and tells us all the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Uh, I retained my liaison position with the Recreation Committee. And some of the things that they're working on is a couple of initiatives at Happy Camp, one of which has been bounced around for a while. But, you know, there, to get to the two swim areas at Happy Camp, you have to pretty much walk through someone's, uh, R V space. And so we're, uh, they're working on, uh, an idea to, to make two pathways that aren't going to go through anybody's R V space and have some steps go out into the water, uh, to, into the two swim areas. That's, you know, those are great projects because they're small, they're inexpensive, and they're relatively easy to do. Uh, they're also working on, uh, you know, we had some incidents recently. Uh, we had two days when there were some five mile an hour speed limits on the main lake. Some people didn't see the yellow flags or the, or the warnings and they got tickets. So we're trying to implement a system where the, a yellow flag condition is, is, uh, much more broadcast other than just on the website. Because who's, who looks at the website before they go on their boat? So we're trying to, uh, improve that. Uh, the pride, the best idea that's been put forth is to put a flag right at the entrance to the tunnel from people on the space. So when they go on the main lake, they go, oh, oh, yellow flag, better not, better not, you know, hit the throttle. Um, they're also working on some, uh, uh, volleyball improvements to our existing volleyball courts. Apparently the, the sand is not good. It kind of cuts up your feet. Well, that's, that's no good. So, uh, we're looking at expensive sand. I'm, I say expensive. I did know there were so many kinds of sand. There's lots of different kinds of sand. Uh, and finally, real quick, uh, they're looking at, uh, maybe another bleacher, uh, at Goldfield. So those are the, those are the sub, most of the things, but not all of the things that Rec Committee is currently working on. And, uh, I look forward to working with them and all of you this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And if you can tell by that, if you don't have anything to do in Canyon Lake, it's probably your own fault, right? We need plenty to do here. So that's good. Um, so I know, uh, Jeff, Bill, our other new director, uh, isn't here today. He's on business travel. Uh, regrets that he can't be here today, but, uh, he is on the Estates Committee and on the Facilities Planning Committee, just to kind of round it out. Um, I would, uh, let's see, I guess I'll start with committees. I'm, uh, I'm on the, I'm continue to be on the Security Advisory Committee. And just to let you know what they're doing, they, they do, they conduct quarterly perimeter audits where they, they go in, in pairs and they kind of, they walk around all of Canyon Lake and look at all our fences and make sure that there's no holes or, or, or ways for people to get around our, our gate system. And they, they do that. And they, in fact, last time, they found a pretty big opening where we were finding that some, an, an individual was finding his way in through those and we were able to get that remedied. Uh, so they did that. Um, they're also, uh, starting a pilot of a neighborhood watch program. I know it's been started in the golf course, but we're also starting one, uh, on, uh, on Big Range Road and, and they're, they're starting with a pilot, uh, coming up with, seeing how that's going to work. And then as they gain more experience, it's going to roll out, uh, more broadly in the community. Um, and then the last thing that they're doing is on August first, um, our community, actually Canyon Lake, is sponsoring the National Night Out, um, which is a, a national organization where, where all law enforcement comes out and talks, uh, and makes this available to the public. And, and they have, they have different, uh, vehicles and SWAT teams and you get to do that. And so, uh, the, our, our Security Advisor Committee and, and, uh, and the P O A and the city are going to all, all partner together in participating in that. So that's, uh, that's what's going on in the Advisory Committee. I'm also on a couple of committees with the, um, where we're working with the city ones, a round table that happens on a monthly basis. Uh, and then there's also, uh, a working committee with the mayor and the mayor pro tem. And, and so participating with them and to find, I'd find ways for us to continue to work together, uh, with both organizations, for the city and the P O A to work together is uh, to, to best serve our committee. So we're doing that. And then I, and at least lead liaison for the Architectural Control Committee, uh, which is a, a big job, but well-staffed. Pardon? With a short stick, yeah. Um, but we'll also be, uh, it's a big job and, and the number of our other directors will be rotating that and to make sure we provide that, that, uh, team with with full coverage, uh, as needed. So I want to echo my comments, uh, to, uh, Eric and the staff. Yesterday's was another rousing success. I want to thank everyone. Uh, and I don't know, I don't know if anyone really appreciates how much, uh, that our staff does. We've had a fifth day committee. The planning document, planning goes for months and they have a very thick document. They were, they were out there at what, four thirty, five thirty in the morning? Uh, uh, and they were there till everything finished up at night, both days. I mean, it's a Herculean effort. Uh, they're really the unsung heroes behind everything. And so I, I want to say thank you, uh, to all of you. Um, because we, for all of us, uh, members and residents, uh, we just had a ball. It was great. I also want to say congratulations to the Canyon Lake, uh, under eighteen, uh, tennis team. Uh, they, they were the, uh, best in Southern California. They won the sectionals. They beat the best teams in San Diego, Orange County, and Los Angeles. The finals, finals were against the Los Angeles team, which is a big deal to beat the best teams in the Los Angeles area. Uh, and they not only won, I think they won like forty-five to thirty-three or something that they kind of crushed the competition. So good job. All of our, 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 our youth are, are doing a great job representing Canyon Lake. For those, uh, we have a number of comments on pickleball. Uh, Paul and, uh, and Sue spoke up today. We've received a number of letters. And, and as a, as an individual, I want you to know, we are hearing your comments. Uh, we appreciate, uh, and, and understand your concerns. Uh, we are doing some things. Uh, we're constructing new courts. Uh, that's in progress. Uh, we also have some more security measures that are going, we'll have, uh, a gate, a car readers at the gates and we're putting new signs up that'll be consistent with, uh, with the rules that we have that maybe will help reserve some, uh, eliminate some of that confusion. So, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, I'd like to see the, these improvements complete and finish and, um, and then see if the, some of the growing pains and issues we're seeing, uh, don't, uh, aren't resolved by all, all the things we have in progress. So hopefully we'll know within a few months. Uh, other than that, I, um, we will be moving our next two board meetings. So I know everyone's used to having them be the first Tuesday of the month. Well, the first Tuesday of next month is, is July fourth and, and this room, this, this lodge will be packed. Um, but not for a board meeting. It's, it's, it's to enjoy our, our amazing fireworks show out on the lake. Um, and so as a result, we are moving next week, next month's board meeting to July eleventh. Same place, same time, but July eleventh. Similarly, just to give you a heads up, we're doing the same thing in August. The first Tuesday in August is August first. We will be moved because that's National Night Out. And we hope to participate as a community in National Night Out, um, uh, over in the Town Center. We're going to move our board meeting to, to the second Tuesday, which is August eighth. And with that, I want to wish everyone, uh, the next big one, we just finished yesterday's and the next big holiday in Canyon Lake, which are the two biggest of the, of the, of the year is Fourth of July. Where, where our population either doubles or triples, uh, on the weekend. And, uh, again, a great time by all. So I want to wish everyone a, uh, a safe and happy fourth. With that, I think we have one uh, architectural appeal present. Um, and so I think we're going to go, we're going to adjourn for five, it'll take a, a short five-minute, uh, break and we'll adjourn for that and then the window appeals. Yes, I got, I got the nod. Alex, are you still with us?
No.
Okay, let's, uh, let's resume the meeting. Uh, we have architectural appeals.
I just want to clarify right now that Mr. Sullivan is not here today. Because I believe that this was going to be as written. So the appeal was as an as written and he would not be here tonight. So to try to explain it to you, the Sullivans and Lisa Westwood, they're appealing an A C C rule condition, which is a part of, um, the actual, uh, permission to do what they were, they're doing. And so that was regarding P C four point three A. So they received a permit for a block wall, replacing the driveway and a fence uh, with the condition that the block wall must be split-faced decorative block or stuccoed on all exposed surfaces. And then again, it also talked about the driveway. On March ninth of this year, the member called for a final inspection and we went out on the tenth and the inspection was conducted and found that the wall was not stuccoed and therefore could not be signed off due to P C four point three A. Now, in your board packets, there is the, um, diagram and there's also the picture of the wall in question. So an interim letter was sent explaining that the project could not be signed off and that it was not according to the approved plan, the wall requires stuccoing. On March twenty-seventh, the member submitted an appeal to the A C C Committee regarding P C four point three A. The committee reviewed the appeal on April sixth and then it denied the appeal. Retaining wall must be split-faced, stuccoed, or decorative block. This was a condition of approval and all exposed surfaces on both sides must be stuccoed. On April seventh, the member requested more time to obtain an estimate to stucco the wall. The committee granted a final ninety days and then on May tenth, the member submitted the board to, uh, appeal to the Board of Directors. I have, um, given you all of the, um, P C rulings and also the C C N R, which would, uh, pertain to this particular rule. And so if we could, um, look, he asked for us to read his appeal and he, he supplied, um, quite a few pictures. He also supplied a picture of a neighboring property, which we're not allowed to comment on, nor can we explain to him what that, what the process is. But he was talking here that retaining walls are excluded from the appearance requirements in P C four point three A, which that's not really true. Um, how the, it's read is that, uh, let's go ahead and read it. And we can understand what we're talking about. P C four point three A talks about fences, walls, and retaining. As is walls, a general manner, the association does not consider retaining walls as subject to height and location limits of the section. Generally speaking, retaining wall shall be no higher than what is designed to retain. So this is a retaining wall that we're, that's in question. So under A, it talks about the appearance portion of it, where walls must be constructed of split-face block, colored concrete block, slump stones, or covered with stucco in colors that are harmonious to the house color or other materials acceptable to the committee. And then it goes on to say fences and walls shall be finished on both sides and be substantially similar in appearance. Unfinished natural gray concrete cement blocks will not be approved. And that's specific, specifically what is here on this picture, which is, um, exhibit two. So what the committee and staff is recommending at the Board of Directors uphold the A C C Committee's decision and deny the member's appeal to keep the wall as built, which we consider a violation of P C four point three A.
Need discussion?
I read through this the other day. I looked through it again today and just blows me away. It's, it's very clear. The, it's not allowed and yet and I can't imagine that he saved a whole lot of money putting regular blocking instead of split-face. I, I haven't bought block in forever, but, um, I, I just can't see why we should make any, uh, approvals on, on this, but I, I wish he was here to plead his case. I've read his notes, so I understand, you know, lack of visibility and all that, but still, rules are rule.
Greg, any comments?
Well, I too wish the gentleman was here because often there's a side to this that doesn't maybe appear in these documents, but we are deciding in his absence to decide on these documents. And as Joe said, I don't see any way we could not uphold A C C's denial.
For my own benefit, I believe we, uh, if he would, if he were just stucco code it, it would be in compliance.
That is correct.
This is not a, this is not a difficult fix, in my opinion.
No.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Motion to uphold ACC's denial appeal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Repose?
Three in favor, two absent. Motion carried.
Right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose?